Everyone hear me? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the study session being held here at Estrella Mountain Elementary at 6:02. Governing Board members present are Paul Bixler, Brian Parks, Michael Todd, myself, Mark Aguirre. It's going to be kind of a informal type meeting that we're going to be able to engage with the community throughout this. And with that, Paul, if you could, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and with that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Schuff.
Well, again, welcome to all of you here. As Mr. Aguirre said, this will be formal in that we'll present some information and background information that we've been working together to give some background options. But really, the purpose of our time tonight is to listen to all of you. So we'll provide some ideas and some information, and then you, as you're thinking about things, that may spur you to have some other ideas, such as, well, what about a variation of this? So to the best of our ability, we'll be able to try to respond on the fly and have that be part of the conversation. So if you take notes on anything or just have ideas, that will have an opportunity to come out. So we're going to take this in kind of two parts, and the first part we'll talk about is around a discussion of the override budget interests. And so I'll just share with you a little bit of background information about the maintenance and operation budget. All right, here we go. So the maintenance and operation budget is one of several budgets the district has. And this one is when we target how we spend the dollars, or how we try to target how we're going to budget the dollars, we try to budget, we aim for a lofty goal of 70% of all those combined dollars going to things that are classroom-related, and then 30% to what we would consider more operational. So that's just something that we hold in our heads, and then here's how it looks when we put that into practice. So this current school year's budget, you can see that 57%, that's this big blue section on the right-hand side, that goes towards instruction. And instruction, when we say that, that's things like teachers and salaries and benefits, and it, you know, a small percentage, a very small percentage of that is things like supplies, but things that go directly into the classroom. Also, what the Auditor General considers a classroom dollars are student support, which is the red on the bottom that says 7%, and instructional support, which is green that says 5%. So combined, we hit about 69%, one of the higher percentages that we've had as a district than in years past. When we look at it year over year, the instruction part, remember I showed you before, that was at 57% year over year. Again, we're always like striving to have that number be as high as we can have it, but we've really centered right around about 57 to 58% over the last several years. And if you go back even farther in historical Liberty District history, it's also, you know, right around that amount. So the district has a long history of putting the dollars to the classroom. So another consideration is we just kind of check our goals and what we're trying to do and how we're trying to spend our money as a district, and we compare ourselves to other districts. And the Auditor General is kind of the third-party evaluator for all of the state of Arizona, and the Auditor General determines who our peer districts are. So going down the left side are our peer districts, similar to us, and we put the very highest amount of dollars to instruction. So this shows 59% instead of 57% because the Auditor General includes a few other funds as well. So in order for us to compare, we have to compare the way that the Auditor General compares our dollars. But when you look at that, we are the very top at 59%, 4% higher than any of our peer districts of the dollars that go directly to instruction, essentially our classroom teachers. Administratively, this is where you want to be among the lowest, or the lowest. And here we are, the second from the lowest with our dollars that go to administrative costs. So that's a good picture to have. It's really the best picture I've seen in any district is high dollars to instruction, high dollars overall to classroom, and a very minimal amount to administration. When we look at our projected budget limits, the whole reason why we're here, having a broader conversation with our public, is that over time, if this first bullet, I'll just step out. That $850,000 isn't a set-specific amount, it's relative to our overall budget and the revenue control limit. So while we're working with $850,000 increments, that number is actually likely to grow over the next years. So the $1.7 million, if the district were to pass the override next November, we would be back on track with our expected revenue growth as typical for our district, and then hitting, and you see it goes into the black. If the override continues to not pass in future years, the red line shows what that trajectory for overall revenue for the school district will be, loss of revenue due to the override. So the results of the election, just to share with you that information, overall, it was defeated by 343 votes. Total participants, 6,329, and that is a smaller number than the actual number of parents that we have in our district. Children have, in the student information system, anywhere from one to three to four parents that are signed up there. So you can see, we lost by 343 votes. The voter turnout was about 50%, 50 years of age and plus. About 25% of that turnout was actually 65 years of age and older. So we had a very high turnout of an older population and not as much of a turnout of parents who may be affected by these, by the vote. So the things that the override posted were smaller class sizes, keeping that average between, to a 27-to-1 ratio, music, art, and PE programs, retention of our teachers, full-day kindergarten. The reason full-day kindergarten was on this list is our state pays per pupil only half the amount for a kindergarten student compared to a first through eighth grade student. So it's, that's the only part that's paid for. The district has to make up the difference to be able to offer full-day kindergarten. And then finally, after-school sports and clubs. So these are the things that were listed in the pamphlet, and so can be part of our conversation today, among anything else that you bring up. So we have worked to provide, get some stakeholder input, just to come up with the ideas. That helped us to be able to get some costs associated with some ideas that are there. That does not mean that's the end of the idea generating, and so that's why we're here tonight, just to let you also come up with those things. For each of the interests, there's information corresponding that talks about describing what that budget interest is, the cost, the impact of that, either if you take something away, or if you add something. And then we pay attention to the function or the category of the budget, because we also really try to responsibly maintain as close as we can get to as that 70-30 split. So here's our process tonight. You're going to review what we proposed, where you're going to identify things that are new that we should add for the board to consider, and you are going to support our governing board with prioritizing that. When we get into the conversations, our board members won't be sitting up here all formally, they're going to be joining you at your tables, they're going to be mixing and milling around, kind of like a teacher in the classroom, going from table to table to check on things, to listen in, to hear your ideas. And so just please speak warmly and openly about your ideas with our board members. So from here, at your tables, you have two documents. Kelly, help me with the name of the first one that we want them to pay attention to for override. Draft Override Reductions, that's a good name. So if you pull, pull that one up, and I'm going to just talk through some of these things, so feel free to take any notes. I'm going to try to talk as quickly as I can without oversimplifying, because I'm trying to save the time for you all to have conversation. Kelly, I may ask you to scroll for me, because I can't be in two places at the same time. Yes? Hello? There we go. All right. So this is a list that I think different groups would probably prioritize differently, so just know that, right now, it's just a list. Don't think of it as in any priority order at this time, and I'll just take a little time to explain what you're looking at. So I'll call it line one, even though on the Excel doc on the left, you've got different line numbers. We've got the line number that says one, elimination of maintenance and operation-funded extracurricular activities. This is our after-school sports program, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and student council, sponsor, science olympiad, and yearbook. Like, this is a test after Christmas to see what I can remember. And so if you took all of those things, that's $161,000. Later, you're going to see another budget interest where somebody else had a different idea, say, what if we did partial? And that is a lesser amount, so that's $161,000. So you're listening right now and saying, which of those makes sense to me if we were trying to come up with approximately $850,000 of cuts? And as you're listing, you say, I don't like any of those, I've got a better idea for the district to consider. You're also noting that, because that's going to come out in the conversations. So just kind of listen, put a little marking system of what's making sense to you, whether it's check-plus, check, check-minus, you know, whatever you like. All right, row two, four-day school week for all students. This would, hasn't been defined, like, what the four-day week would look. There'd be a lot of information in studying this to say how we could pull this off, but it essentially would look like eliminating the half-day that we have on Wednesday, having four full days, and likely adding one hour to the schedule each of the four days. Teachers or staff would still perhaps come in on Mondays for some professional development or some IEP meetings or things like that, but not necessarily every Monday, because we just added on to their school day, let's say Tuesday through Friday. I'm arbitrarily picking Monday, because there's a lot of holidays, we lose Mondays anyway. So just, just, that's kind of the general concept, okay? So with that, that's a loose number of $212,000, because you, it's primarily tied up in utilities, and we'd have to say, would we get that savings utility on the one day we were coming? Also has some savings related to transportation costs, but we also lose revenue. As soon as we lose miles, we also lose a different type of revenue in our budget, so sometimes that's going to offset about half of that savings that we get from transportation and a few other things. So this is just a general loose number, $212,000. We may not realize all of that, we could realize a little bit more of that. That one would also require us to really get out in front with our parents and see if there's widespread support for that in addition to just making a cut. But I will tell you, I did hear from staff, it came up as an idea almost just about every school I went to, talking with parents. It does have some interest, I just don't know if it's across-the-board interest, that's what we would have to find out. Decrease instructional minutes for special area classes. Our special area classes currently are 40 minutes. This, this particular budget interest would have the result of decreasing our instructional minutes for art, music, and PE by five minutes per day. And the unintended good consequences of that is we would have a little bit more time towards our core content areas, and it would require somewhere between two to four staff members less if we had to add in for growth for next year. So basically, it would be keeping our staffing costs the same as what it is this year and not having to put in the growth dollars. Okay, so that's a five-minute less special area class. Full-day kindergarten tuition, this would be not a tuition every month, it would just be a one-time fee, affixed to every kindergarten student who attends. Different groups have talked about it in different ways, how much that would be. I believe this is modeled at $500. We've modeled a couple ways, but this, this particular number is modeled at 500, which, you know, we would have, if this was to go forward, I think we'd be hopeful that we could arrange it so tax credit funds could be used to offset 400 of those dollars for families, $250 for individuals, and it doesn't have to come just from that particular family, it could come from any, you know, taxpayer in the state of Arizona could actually contribute, up to $400. So that's one idea. Recognize another side of the full-day kindergarten is parents choose not to. They, those children would have to be released early, not necessarily half a day early, it might be 45 minutes early. That part, we would have to work out, you know, if this grew interest from people to help offset the cost of kindergarten. Yes, that's the, that's the challenge that we would face of some kids getting more education than others, and so it would have to be, anything that happened after that point in time would have to be considered enrichment, that we wouldn't be able to take grades for, if you will. But, so yes, it has its own, it's got a lot more to it for this one, but it is a potential. So we tried to put any of the ideas on the table, so everyone could have consideration for them. All right, the, the next few on the list all have to do with signature program additional costs. In the past few years, we have supplemented Las Briesas Academy, Estrella Mountain, Westar, and I think that's it, with additional, at least one additional or half an additional staff member. And that has been to support signature programs or specialized programs at those schools. So the risk here for these is if those go away, that could jeopardize the ability for the schools to continue to operate those programs. So you all are from Estrella Mountain, so I can see the, in your eyes, so I just want to, you know, recognize that the IB program is here at Estrella Mountain, and IB requires Spanish instruction, art, music, and PE in order to be licensed or certified as an international baccalaureate school. So just know that, you know, it might be easy to make a cut, just know that it has a much bigger implication for that. DLI helps to reduce the class size when we have English-only versus dual-language classrooms, they don't come in balanced, so that's helped them to keep those class sizes well-distributed. The MAG program really isn't a programmatic cut, it was an idea that was surfaced based on the class size, so it's really more like, run like a special education program. So it's really based on the number of students that are participating and what that class-size ratio is, if you have a 1 to 18 ratio. So that really is more of a staffing one, so much as a signature program. And another idea that surfaced was four-day kindergarten week, and I, you know, don't think we've modeled this cost just yet. The pros of that certainly is, you know, now maybe we're only paying for 80% of the cost instead of, sorry, if you say, they pay for, state pays 50, if we paid 30 to make 80% or four days a week, we reduce our cost to 30% instead of 50% of the total. The downside is that our teachers may not be willing to come for an 80% salary instead of 100% salary. So we might lose all of our teachers, so this is, if there's ups and downs to these things. Reduction of instructional coach positions. This idea was at Estrella Mountain and Liberty Elementary School or smaller schools, could they share an instructional coach instead of having an instructional coach per, per campus? And then you see several more, all of these relate to just variations of, well, what if we didn't entirely eliminate extracurricular activities? What if we lessened the amount of teams? Just one boys' team, one girls' team per sport, change it to three sports per year for each boys and girls, and still offer the club sponsorships? So that savings would go down to $69,300 instead of the $160,000. Other pay to participate, doing some estimates on, the first one, line 13, pay to participate, is that must be for just sports? Okay, so it just, so that one's sports. We add on, add on that, so line 13 is clear. Okay, I'm just going to jump down, that's past line 20, anything more? Did we have on there a class-size reduction, or am I imagining things? We did? I missed one? Okay, you guys were so polite. Okay, class-size maximum adjustment. We have target class sizes right now, I'm going to try to rattle them off and see, test my memory. 22 kindergarten, 24 first and second, 20, 26 third grade, 28 fourth and fifth grade, 36th through 8th grade. We've been modeling so many different directions, it's going, running in my head. So those are how we've modeled, have we, those have been our targets. And what that means is, when we hit a classroom, we start watching it, if they're one or two over that amount, we start watching that, say, is that really going to stay up at the highs, is it going to come back down again, what's happening with that? And when it hits four over, we say, okay, doesn't matter, we've got to, we've got to put an extra teacher in. So, so really, that, where you are really at, when we say our staffing, it really becomes that target plus four in reality. So this one is modeled at keeping the target at kindergarten, first, second, and third the same, with no change. Fourth and fifth, jumping those target class sizes up to 31, and sixth through eighth, jumping those up from 30 to 31. By increasing the class sizes, it changes how many new staff we have to, we would have to add on with an additional 5 or 6% growth next year. And the change in average, our enrollment keeps changing, so I keep re-looking at it, but it's right around 1 to 26 at our regular target class sizes, and 1 to 26.3 when we do a class-size adjustment. So this is an example of something that, you know, we could say, all right, let's have a little bit more of an adjustment, or a little bit less of an adjustment, and we could see what that would be. Essentially, for every teacher, it's right around $70,000 salaries and benefits is how we modeled the cost of that. So you can see, this is right about seven positions that, you know, that we would look at as a potential budget decrease. If you wanted to see less, less of an impact on that classroom, then you would say, can we model that at $210,000 instead of $490,000? Essentially, that's how you move up or down, is just thinking the price of a teacher salary and benefits. Okay, so now it's your turn to talk. So I've talked a lot. I'm going to let our board members join you at various tables. If you're sitting by yourself, it doesn't work unless you're having a conversation, so you're going to have to join in, and just, please just have a conversation. You all can come to agreement if you want to, and you don't have to come to agreement, because what I'm going to ask you to do at the end of our conversation time is you're going to take these four dots, and you're going to say, number one is your individual, and you can basically cancel out each other's votes at your table if you really want to. But number one is your best, best advice to the governing board, that number one is the best place to think about a budget reduction. Number two is the second-best one, third, and fourth. Okay? And then we're going to be able to see and have greater conversations about what that's looking like, and if you all are liking what you see coming out, and what other additional conversation you would have with the governing board, additional questions. While you're talking, this is also the time to surface your new ideas, or variations of something. So surface those, because I will go table to table, and we're all finished having the group conversations, to say, are there any new ideas that Kelly should try to model for us? Probably not right here on the moment on the fly, but at least maybe by tomorrow. Okay, join in the conversations, gentlemen and ladies? Oh, we could push these together just like this.
Thanks for putting us on the spot.
So what is, so did it make sense, kind of, what this is?
It does. I do have a question here.
Is it basically, hey, if you get rid of this, this is what that amount of savings is, right? And I, they're not ranked in any particular order, it's just, this is what it is.
And this number eight, that's just, this money is used to keep this number of lawyers at that school.
So this is going to be what they're asking about.
So what they're talking about is, making sure of the class size of that particular program.
I like the funding.
What is it, so?
I'm not quite sure.
It's hearing, but the district.
We have one that has about $30,000.
Or, another one.
So this is, this would be basically eliminating one teacher to 18 students.
And you have the numbers.
And this could be, could be 25, or it could be 13.
They could, they just have to.
No, I understand.
So that they can hear it, so they can hear what that means.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, a MAG thing, for the kid to get, he has, and they have to have your eye, and two out of the three gifted areas to be taught.
However, but.
And it has to be taught.
Correct.
And that instructor teaches.
No, they can't, they can't.
Yeah.
So when you guys were looking at this, what were your thoughts on significance?
Um.
Yeah, my, how I want to get that.
Where we have seen the struggle as a family is class size, not at our school in particular, but definitely in the high school. And so that was something that we're kind of sensitive to, because we see as the community's growing, and the schools are, so class size, I think, is important for us, the number of how we're learning class sizes, there are 36 students.
So maintaining the lower.
Yeah, yeah, because we do see, right, our kids.
So when you guys were looking at this, what were your thoughts on some of these?
Where we have seen the struggle as a family is class size. Not at our school in particular, but definitely in the high school. And so that was something that we're kind of sensitive to because we see as the community's growing and the schools are like, yeah. So class size, I think it's important for us. The number of how many kids in the class size, 36 students.
So maintaining the lower.
Yeah, yeah, because we do see, right, would our kids thrive even better in a smaller class size? And we're from, born and raised in California and that's just the typical class size of 36, sometimes 40 kids in the class. And the smaller class size back here has been really, yeah, like.
So what's kind of that maximum number for you that you still hope?
Six, buddy.
No, I was actually kind of surprised at the 26, 28, 30. Like those are, I feel like that's comfortable space there. Yeah. I mean acknowledging that our, in our mind, the class is more typical. So these class sizes were like, wow, 22 kids in a kindergarten class? I think he had 36. Yeah, so that's a lot of kindergarten kids. So this is, so I think maintaining the smaller class size is important to us.
So when he says, what would that mean? Not knowing what those other ones are. So I can tell you, I've been in our district for over 30 years and we've traditionally had both.
So are these class sizes, would you say those are higher than?
Higher than, I've had class sizes of less than 38. It was ugly.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would say that's too high. Class sizes of 32. I have some that are maybe greater than that.
The junior high classes, I don't have an issue with them being in that like 30.
Right, because they're older. Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's interesting too because I've never seen where the class size is tiered based on their age. So I would agree with.
Yeah, I think that you got to hit the eight or nine of us. So what I'm hearing with you guys is you're sensitive to the class size, but your maximums, that you might actually be able to hit, you might actually agree with this just simply because the maximums that the district is now proposing are actually under what you guys.
Right. So when you say 30, you said 30, what grade level do you feel comfortable with? Nope, this is not a test.
No, no, I think 30.
Up through what grade? Do you want 30 kindergarten?
No, I think fourth grade and less. Yeah, I think the primary care for sure.
We used to do 20 for kindergarten, less than 20. And our numbers were long period. And then it was 24 all the way through fifth grade. So we gradually worked this. So now, I can tell you, a year I had 30 grade down, my class was shooting on day one.
It's like they sense the over 30 kids.
And these cuts are for a year until this goes to birth again. So for me, we have to feel the pain. And I don't want the pain, the pain to be felt by teachers. However, that's typically where it starts. I hate to say that, but that's where it starts. So I mean, you're looking at, that's a lot. Why aren't there not more teachers here tonight? They've already made this presentation. They've already gone through all of them. They've already gone through this. I pretty much have a general idea of at least where the rest are teachers field. And I can tell you, with a person who's been in the district for a long time, is that class size is important in this district. And those that come from, where their class is bigger, it's a certain.
Well, I was gonna say, it's part of why we moved to the community right now.
And it's important. So none of us would want class sizes to be.
But then they'd have the parents.
Then, my opinion would be, Rex, and I'll share with them, one of the years it did the best, okay? And the first thing they eliminated was sports.
I was gonna say, sports. And to be honest with you, that's probably, if I had to prioritize some of those things, that would be my knee jerk reaction, is because I hate to see music go that.
Yeah, this topic is not, extracurricular is only things that take place after school. So that's basketball, baseball, softball.
Can you guys speak to, sorry, I've got some insider trading going on here, so I don't see things. Can you guys speak to the decrease in minutes, instructional minutes for specials? Like the specialty, how that works? How many do you need to work on?
Five.
Five minutes a day?
Does that really make a difference?
No. No. That's why we number one.
It actually gives, so it actually gives the classroom teacher five additional minutes of instruction. It's five minutes less of their special. And it actually.
Yeah, what they're doing with this would be is they're taking those five minutes less stretching across the district and you could be having fewer specials teachers get on that. That's why, that's why they save.
That equates to three teachers there. We're growing, we would have, but because we're gonna shrink their time, so they'll see more kids in a day than if we had had any more. Or that we may have to.
Well, and that was one of the things that, approaching positions, how would it work if there was a road between the one, two, three schools?
So the, sorry, I'm jumping. The rest of the schools, it's my campus and Liberty. So we're two of the smaller campuses, so the instructor most often is the one who goes in and supports our teachers on all levels.
And they would just split the day then?
Yeah, it would be based on enrollment, although it would be like a 75-25 split, it would be a 80-20. I'd split it 80-20, I get our 20% of the time, another campus. So you're requiring travel of the person and trying to allow them to keep confidentiality within our program and support, double the.
So, reason why I brought it up is because these decisions, especially. But to me, is if the classrooms and specials area, so I have a child in the district too, so I feel the way that you feel about class sizes. It's important to you, but it's also, when I came to the district, it was surprising that their class sizes were as low as they were through different grades. Cause I agree with you guys, they came to three.
If you finish up just your thoughts around discussion of what was here, you can still continue the conversations because really you can control whatever's happening at your tables. But I would want to make sure we saved some time for any new ideas or variations of ideas that you would like us to add to this list of options for consideration. So if you continue to discuss it and just make sure you've taken some time to add those things. And board members, if you wanna hang tight with the group you're at, you may. If you wanna shift to another group, you may. And it's okay if there's more than one board member at a group. So just feel free to visit as many of the groups as you want to.
There's no doubt. There's just those two, that gets us 80% of their work.
And I don't mind a four day school week. I don't know how teachers feel about that. Our, our dynamic is a little bit different in that he's a state owner, dad, but if he was working, we've had several conversations about how would we get this kid? What would we do with this kid for half a day? So I know for some parents, that's a struggle. But then what are they gonna do with him for all day? I don't know, but.
The challenge is like, have this number here, 80,000, and there's only so many on this list that kind of take up a chunk of it, you know? So how do you, you know, if you're putting your circles on them, how do you prioritize?
That's where I was kind of looking at, where are the big numbers? But I know she had said four days, and there's some transportation costs that kind of offsets some of that bucket. So I don't know that there's a name there which is.
So I mean, because I look at class sizes, right? And another one that I come away with, that I, just for me, when I look at it, I look at it one for one, for us, is like item number six and item number eight. The reality of it right now is that some of those class size ratios are probably under where we're at right now. As you've heard about principals talk when it comes to the mag, the kids have to actually test to get into the program to begin with.
Right.
So you don't, you don't know. And then again, that's a combination right there. So, but before they leave, the thing that makes this very hard, the reason why these overrides are so important is that, and it's hard to think this way, but it's not, it's not just us individually. We have to think, not everyone. That's what, that's what goes through there. So you understand, it's not just your babies that are worried about it, it's everybody's, right? All the way to freedom. So that's where irrational comes in. What is gonna be the least impactful with the most savings for every child?
Alright, show me with fingers the number of more minutes you wanna have this tabletop conversation before we move on. How many more minutes do you need?
The ratios, or these other two ratios. They're on, but they're not eliminated, they're not removed, they're still there. It's just complicated. And to what you guys said, it's just like you're an optimist, and this may be a hopeful way to be for, because we do have a chance. I don't know how you, they come up with the last thing, about some of the things that we've talked about when it comes to the ratios of the, it's uncomfortable, but it's not actually eliminated.
Without a small. When you were listening, so you'd say, I'll give you a statement, this one is on over at the school, and I'd like to see more.
It's really the elimination of things. Just be honest.
And six, eight, three, four, five, one. So you could say, I just want to see that one, make a model.
This is, this is kind of the way it works with all of us, administration, parents, school board members. We have to get in there more. And if they're standing on there, and this override continues. So I just want to give you a number, so that for your neighbors, so you could pass this on to your neighbors, because there's a lot of misinformation that gets on social media. This is on average within our school. By the elimination of the override, one year, just first year, you're gonna save, the average homeowner is gonna save $123 a year. So that $123, you could just say, that's an average, right? I just want to be clear, that's average. That $123 for that year that you save, basically a night out, eating out for a regular sized family, if you will, right? It costs everybody.
Well, we saw this happening on social media from the Cantonian group, and their type group, and they're very vocal. And we saw that happening and we were brand new homeowners already worried about taxes and we don't know, you know, how does that affect students yet? So I think part of it's gotta be, she's right in that the parents have to have a bigger voice and better understanding of this because that group is very loud and it's a very small portion, but it was.
Yeah, there's fifty pieces with that. But I'm not complaining about being social security. I'm saying you paid, and I'm paying social security, you're getting, that argument doesn't make sense. As the building owner president in this community for 20 years, you know who calls me first about their test scores? Because you know why? Good test scores? So, it's good. So you don't want these things? Your property values. Your homeowners association is gonna take care of them. When I first came here to this school, it was, we were getting kids powering eight ball mountain at this campus. So I brought her YMCA here and we gave them some houses. So we're all in the community. We all have to raise more of the things together. Otherwise, they're gonna be trash from our city, whatever.
And there's complaints about that.
Ding door, doc, you gotta give them some options. And taking away your after school programs?
Yes.
I had the record number of kids tried. 55 year olds tried. 55, 25 boys tried. They're hungry. And we ran up and jumped them. I don't want that to happen, but.
We had that conversation today where we're rolling our eyes that we've gotta take them up to surprise, we're giving them a hug.
Yes. We're richer than others.
We didn't have the products, what's the ability for the kids to do that elsewhere? Like, we don't have options.
Well, they do run an Australian youth association, used to be Australian youth school. But that's no longer a family. Now they run a smaller section, or you go to Good Year, or you'll go to Surprise. Good Year runs the program. And Good Year has wanted to use our facilities, but they've not always been a good name. Because it's not always, their kids didn't always go to school. So I pushed the community to really get a community program going. We ran it, we ran it here at this school and it ran another one.
So just, just know that it's got tools.
So we did that, kids had a.
Both ways. That's the only perspective I know.
So for your perspective, as far as staff and administration goes, what's the priority from your perspective on what, what gets ahead?
I'm okay with class size.
So we.
I'm not happy about it. My first year as a teacher in this district, I got 14 kids. My third year, I had 35. But most of the time, I have just. Never. Now, I've actually, like, as a part of that teachers, we've had over 30. I have over 30 in several sections this year, several major. I have 140 kids in grade this. And I got four teachers. So I'm okay with it.
Well, this is gonna happen at the high school anyways. Our son has English at the school.
It's not good, it's not good.
And that's what, that's what we don't want towards the elementary, even though ours are starting to.
We won't be able to keep teachers that are good.
Bottom line is the one in this place. Then the problem just gets exacerbated.
Well, and that's, that's one of the pieces for us too, is my parents have been in this community for a really long time and my younger sister, like the second graduate of the class of the high school, and my brothers, they all went. And so they kind of felt those growing pains and now we're kind of at the other end of that where when they started out, they didn't have any of the sports and they couldn't keep teachers long enough. So, and get your first couple of years of house, I can get people over here. So that's the tricky part for us too, is we want to attract them to that and we want to, especially for the, I appear to be younger, and I have no problems with our first thing to balance. At the same time, ours went to have day kindergarten, so all day kindergarten, $500 is cheaper than childcare.
I have a lot of sympathy for kindergarten.
The rattle. Alright, if you can finish off the thought you had here and would like to hear from the Well, I was trying to get you to switch in this last time, but you can, you can again. It's okay, it's okay. Alright, so what I'm gonna ask you to do, because the next activity, we're gonna move to like an individual thought on this, and so we'll have you get up out of your seats. But before we do, I want to see if we can surface any ideas that maybe we should be adding to that list. We may not be able to put a cost associated with it, but we could hear, is there an idea that's resonating that's new? So if I go table to table, Mr. Todd's group back there, Ms. Bixler, Mr. Aguirre, Mr. Parks, if you, if someone from your table wanted to surface any new idea that you would like to see modeled and then up for consideration of how we are prioritizing tonight? So anything new that surfaced? How about this table here? Nothing new. Ms. Bixler, table back. Ms. Bixler, table back here, were there any new ideas that you'd like to see modeled?
Yes. Administrative reductions, uh, not that are directly involved in instruction, but look for administrative office reductions that aren't currently existing.
Okay. So I, the way we would have to go about that is to look at an organizational chart, um, identifying some potential positions there. One or more for consideration, and we could put a cost, uh, a salary and benefits cost associated with that. And just like everything else, what are the impacts of that, um, if that were to happen? So we can absolutely do that. And really, some of that conversation is going to happen in this next conversation we're going to have, when we start to move about how do we responsibly grow as a district? And how do we think about that? So you, some of those, you may have some specific ideas around that, so let us know. Ms. Bixler?
Uh, actually, three. Second, reduce the number of kinder days. And since we're looking at a reduction in the number of school days as a, uh, one, one age, why not look at reducing the number of kinder days and split the program? So let's say it's two and a half or two. So instead of being in a four day, you have half the kids in two, half the kids in two.
Um, so yes, um, in the past, uh, school districts have done a half and half split. So half the day, um, they might go to enrichment if they were paying for that. Um, or it was just a half day, half day kindergarten in the morning, and half day kindergarten in the P M. Or as you're saying, it maybe is all day versus all day, you know, and then maybe every other day is, every other week, there's a, the third day is a split. So that would be, um, a fifty percent cut of all of our kindergarten staffing, um, which altogether is more than the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I do, I do know that, and I don't know if Kelly knows the dollar amount right off hand. Do you know how many kindergarten teachers we have total? And that would be a reduction in staff, so we would be letting go some kindergarten teachers, um, but they would be teaching, they would have full, um, full salary compensation. So it's, you solved one of the problems of the four day kindergarten.
And one, one last one. Making, uh, more choice for students at later grade levels, so that maybe all of the kids at first, second, third, kinder first, second, third, would have, uh, all of the specials and the rotations, but then as they get older, they would make a choice. And they would stay with that choice for years, so they would stay with music for years, stay with art for years. And that would reduce the number of students that size, and then open up for those students that chose not to opt in to those programs, but an opportunity to opt in to a, uh, a remedial program where they can get additional support for math, or lightning yards, or science, or, or conscience.
Alright, so I'm going to see if I can say it, um, similar, make sure I'm understanding. If, um, specials, let's just say it was K five, remains the same, they rotate. At sixth through eighth grade, they might choose one to stick with for the year. When that happens, that's a zero change in dollars, because essentially that thirty-five minutes or the forty minutes, that child has to go someplace besides their classroom teacher, to an additional special area teacher. Whether it rotates to a different one every day, or it sticks with the same one, it's the same cost. Um, it's different in a middle school or a high school model, um, because that is, you do your staffing and you give less general education staffing, so that you can give more, um, special area staffing. So, um, I don't know that that would be a budget savings, but that's always an option for us to consider how we assign our specials in, in middle school, and doing something differently. So that's, still could be on the table. Does that make sense? Um, any new ideas, Mr. Todd, your group? Any, any new ones for us to model?
Yeah, we had a few, uh, four of them. One was to, uh, return to what the district used to do, which was an enrichment fee.
Yep.
Uh, the second one was, uh, I T, bring your own device plan, uh, which would, which would save us some money. Uh, the third is, uh, equip, uh, let's see, correct me if I'm wrong here. Uh, looking at some district reorganization and cuts more at the district level. And that's what, can you answer that? Sorry? Oh, um, they had an idea to incorporate a little more, less transportation, and expand our, um, boundaries for bus transportation to be greater than one month.
Okay, I'm glad Kelly's getting this, I was losing the ability to memorize all that. Okay, so return to enrichment, um, that is pretty similar to the cost, um, that was suggested at the other table, which go basically turning to a half day program, and the enrichment is paid for entirely by, um, the people who would choose to participate. So yes, that would be half of the overall kindergarten staffing cost that we have. And so we, we can, we can model that, probably that one sooner than later. And, uh, I T, bring your own device. So if the savings is we are not spending money on devices, that would actually be a capital, um, consideration versus a maintenance and operation budget. So it won't help us in this scenario, but it, it could be a consideration.
Um, I, there was just a little bit of confusion. The first one was not, um, an enrichment, it was an enrichment fee, but not the kindergarten part. A ten dollar enrichment fee per student.
Okay, and now I understand, thank you. So schools had a ten dollar fee, um, that was, um, that they just said, hey, all parents pay. Um, all pay, our, our parents at Westar, all parents pay ten bucks. And that generated some additional revenue at the school, great. Um, and if it's voluntary and people donated that, great, they can do that all day long. What we weren't able to do is have that be a tax credit donation, because legally it has to go towards extracurricular activities or character education, and it had to go specifically to a specific, um, thing with that. So could, could schools ask for a ten dollar donation from every family? We can. Can we assign it? Um, no, we can't require it, because we're required legally to provide a free and public education. Is that it, Minnie?
Yes, and just to take it back off of that, those who did pay did not have to pay, but paid the place participation fee. The ten dollars included that.
Right, we just had legal issues with being able to have it associated with tax credits. Yeah, so we, we struggle with from the tax credit side, and then we also can't require it from every student, which helps us on a budget savings. We, we need to have things we can actually count on. Now, could we take a donation from all of our families of ten dollars, twenty dollars per student, and then it goes to a pool that helps us offset a particular budget the following year? Um, and we know exactly how much we've collected? I, I suppose we could. Expand transportation, can you say more about that one?
About like a mile and a half, or like it's straight in Westar. Most of the people live pretty close to schools, and we have really safe bike trails all through here, that you can just, um, ride back to school, you know?
Um, so yes, we can, that'll take a little more, we just do a route analysis and, and refigure that and some costs associated with it. So we won't be able to have that by tonight, but if that's really resonating with you, we'll, we'll list, we'll try to list some of these other ideas. You can still put your dots next to these other ideas if you think that's something that sounds, um, like a good option for you. The, um, expansion of the transportation, just again, know that we will save money on routes, and then we lose some money, other route miles we get for funding on the transportation, um, revenue that comes in. So it's, I don't know, it, maybe about fifty percent of whatever, whatever benefit you got, you lose about twenty-five percent maybe? It's formula based, I, I can't, I can't explain it, I'm sorry. But yes, it's an idea, and, um, other school districts have done that sort of thing. Okay, so the next activity, you're going to get out of your seat, Mr. Aguirre? Soften it. So an example of that would be, rather than the elimination of M and O funded extracurricular activities, to be the reduction, um, the reduction, which is, would be an adjustment. That one was sixty, about sixty thousand dollars versus a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as an example. Okay. Um, I also heard in a couple of tables, perhaps an adjustment, um, for modeling for, uh, class size? You know, so I heard that at a couple of tables also. Alright, so, um, is Alex, do you have one spare piece of paper over there, a blank one? Here's, here's what we'll do, is we'll, we'll take, I'll take one of them, um, let's just take the, the one here on the end. It's reduction of instructional coach positions. If you'll just put in marker, other, you'll leave it there, you're fine, just underneath it, I'm going to have you write other, about halfway down. So if you are the first person, so one of these new ideas, because we couldn't anticipate all of your ideas. Um, if you have a new idea, um, I'm going to ask you to first list it kind of in big, big letters, so other people can see it and read it. You'll be the first person, and you'll put, if you think that's one of your priorities over something that's already, an idea that's already been generated. You're going to put your dot, the one, two, three, or four dot, next to that. That also alert other people in their consideration. Now they can also consider your new idea and prioritize that as well. Okay, so if you heard something here today, um, look for it in the other and or add it yourself. Okay, so, and even if it didn't get surfaced just now, you can still add it yourself, or take in, take in ideas. Okay, so what I'm going to ask you to do again, is how the dots will work, is one is your first option, and we know they're not all equal, because they all have different dollar amounts. So, you know, overall, um, I don't want to unfairly push you to some things. So you're not necessarily trying to on your own get to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Um, because there's only so many that add up that, that amount. I, I want you to be a little more unlimited. So just pick your top four, uh, four consideration, and put the dots next to those things of where, where they are. So it's one dot per choice, and when we look across the room at the end, where we see mostly red, we're going to go, oh, that's mostly, where people were putting their first choice, their first option. If we see blue was number four, that's one of their lesser choices. We'll just know that by looking at the colors afterwards. Does that make sense, or any questions?
I have a question. If there are, if you say raising the number of children, and maybe half the world, there's two percent of the one and four, like, I don't know if it's not. Well, I think the answer is always yes, something could be more site-based. That will take more time and we are, will be up against some things like staffing, contracts, some of those, and most of this money is, you know, I don't know, is it eighty percent is tied up in salaries and benefits of this maintenance and operations. So as we, I'm not gonna say no because the board could be interested in that and maybe schools, you know, would really like to see some variation. So not against it, just know that we'd have to move really pretty quickly to be able to make that happen. But as we, if we are faced with another eight hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars in the next year, you know, maybe that's something we consider as an approach, more site-based, so.
Just one dot, but you could withhold your two, three, and four if you didn't have something else. Okay? All right, so I'm gonna have you get up out of your seat. They're listed over here and again, if there's a variation or a new idea that you want, you know, people to consider, put that and I'll make it clear over here. I'll stand over here by the reduction of instructional coach. That one, we're gonna split the screen if you will. All right, so each of you get to choose. Decreased instructional minutes, there's a lot of green up here, I'm getting closer, that's a two. Increased class size maximums, there's other dots besides red, but quite a few there. More preponderance of red there. Full day kindergarten, just added a new number four, some threes here, threes and fours. Pay-to-play or empty. Forty school week has kind of a nice mix of heavier on the ones and a two, a three, and a four, or four threes. IB cut, a couple of there, a couple there and athletics options too. And you also see it with some of the pay-to-play participation fees, so maybe some ideas that could generate from that that could be combined. Extracurricular activities, lots of threes, couple of fours. DLI class size reduction, a few, and then a couple of fours here at, in the central office administration cuts. So if you'll find your way back to your table, we're gonna talk now, move to the second part of the agenda. And board members, if you wanna make a shift to a different group, make a shift. And then we'll, we'll summarize the tallies for these, for each of the meetings. We'll take a picture of these and summarize it in an Excel doc and send it out to everybody. All right, we've been now talking about budget override and the conversation and the interest that were generated are mostly in the, I call it the budget category of instruction. Right, so that is where we have maybe more dollars than our peers go towards instruction. It does not mean that that's the only place that we can take, get cuts from, right? So just need, know that the whole MNO budget has to be thought of as a whole, but to get us thinking about if we were rare, the instructor money's come from, is that the same place that we take them back from? But we do have the entire budget to consider. So if the override passed or didn't pass, the district is also faced with growth. This school year, we experienced twelve percent growth. We opened a new school K-5, next year it will go to K-8. The following year, we're expecting somewhere between five and six percent growth, which is really what we budgeted for this past year, but we really kind of super elevated our, our growth even higher than expected, higher than our demographers anticipated. So that's what we start to look at is how do we grow? When we look at what the demographer showed us over time, over the next ten years, we're going to see more and more growth. All the developments that are coming, we're expecting that. So we also have to think about as a district, how do we grow? We targeted, remember I said we were targeting about trying to hit that seventy percent mark to instruction, thirty percent to operations. So as we grow, the categories of the budget, we have a certain percentage we've been doing with each one. Let's see if I've got, see where I'm aiming now. Okay. So on your, on your worksheets, let's see, on the, on your tables, you will see almost like mini budgets for the growth that we expect for next year. That means above and beyond what we already have, we will be getting additional revenue for growth for, for the students that we have. So for that five to six percent, with that comes additional revenue. And so we have to think about how will we grow as a district? So if, an easy analogy is if the classroom, we had thirty children in the classroom and now all of a sudden we have forty kids at that school in that grade level, well now we needed to move from one teacher to two teachers. Everybody kind of gets that. You have to add more teaching staff as you go. So in the same way, if we have more students to serve with special education, then we also have, will need special education teachers. We will also at some point hit, hit a limit where our psychologists, we have to add more psychologists. We add on a school, we have to add school administration. We add on transportation, we add on drivers. We add on, to the district, we've added, the past year, we added or combined into some reorganization and partially added almost a whole position to human resources. For every one hundred staff members, we have a person in human resources. When we hit like about another five hundred kids, we'll be adding, we'll be recommending to add another technology support person to support with the, the technology. So for however, you know, a certain number of square feet of facilities we have, then at that point of that growth, then we add on additional groundskeeping. So we try to, you know, maintain some ratios, but we try to do that so it doesn't ever exceed our overall percentages of, by each of those budget categories because we've been successful as a district of maintaining a high percentage to instruction and overall classroom and a low percentage, or very low percentage to the operation side of things. So that's why you're now seeing the budget increase that we're expected to get for new, new students generates, then how, we should need to think about how will we grow? So the obvious question that comes to mind is, well, what if you don't add these positions? Then that would take care of the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we don't add the positions, then we start to shift and we, we would have to adjust how we are growing as a district. So our instruction could be maintained at a higher level. It could be higher than what it is currently today. It could also be our administrative costs while low, could they be even lower? And what are the intended benefits and consequences of that? Right, so of just how you would responsibly grow a district? So these are, what you're seeing on the page are what have suggested, you know, for what potential budget interest would be to deal with the growth and responsibly maintain that. And so I'm going to give you a little bit of time at your tables to talk about those. Kelly, if you'll just put them, the next, just click on the slide, I must've set it down. Here is, yeah, that's what's the one I want. Go back one. Go back one. Okay. This is an overview and how it's divided is these are the things that you see over and over in multiple budget categories. So they are related to employer-related expenses, Arizona State retirement increases that we know are coming our way, step increases, that has to do with compensation for our support staff, compensation increases for all staff and supplies. So it was modeled at a two percent compensation increase. The inflation for this past year across the state of Arizona was more than five percent. Our budget that comes from the state, they gave us one point, two and change. They gave us one point two percent and change in what we actually got in additional revenue for inflation. So that means when we had to do minimum wage and we have to meet minimum wage, we had to provide the five percent plus increase because that's by state law. We had to do that, but we had to do it by taking something else away, right? It has to come out of our regular budget. So right now, this is modeled at, this is just a budget interest. So this is an example of some of the conversation you could have at the table. If this is a two percent compensation increase for all staff, you could say, we won't retain and recruit people if we only do two percent. We need more than that. Or you could say, no, no, I don't want this going to staff, I think it needs to go to programs for kids. So you can say that you would like to see this increased or decreased for consideration. So this is just how it's, you know, one example for modeling. So if you want it to be three percent, that two percent amount just simply gets, you know, fifty percent more. Then the things that are in the classroom, when we look at, you know, growth for the five percent, six percent of kids enrollment coming our way, we'd say, all right, that's about ten teachers. Now, that includes special ed and includes general ed. And so you saw an offsetting number, you know, for maybe not quite that many on the other side in the override. So again, you know, where that's, most of this money is in staffing. The reading intervention teacher at point five, Blue Horizons, they're gonna be growing and so that brings them up to the same staffing that all the other schools have. Psychologist, more and more special ed IEPs and all the evaluations that need to be done, so consideration of psychologists. So these are the things that fit into that classroom of trying to get as close as we can to seventy percent. And then operations, on the operations side, Blue Horizons and Los Breces Academy will be joining the ranks of Westar of over seven hundred students. So that is an increase of one and a half administrative costs at the school. Technology, purchase service, that's where we wouldn't, don't have enough money for a position for added support, but can do some through purchase service for some of that infrastructure service support. Custodial services, that's going to increase when we go to K-8 at Blue Horizons. So essentially, this is really directly related to growing our school. The maintenance transportation director, that's a budget interest. The school district had a director for maintenance and transportation back in two thousand and eight and it was cut at that time during budget cuts and since then we've grown two schools and our district has grown quite a bit. So this is an example of one that is a kind of a central office one, so that's a consideration over there on the cut side. So I think, you know, that one is, we have to think about that. If we don't, you know, each year, look at how we are growing the departments, they will become lower than very low compared to our peers and we won't have the operational support to our instructional programs. So it's, it just works both ways, you know, and I'm not gonna try to influence you one way or the other, just know that these are the kinds of things that would be up there if there were no override at all. This is what the district, different departments, staff has proposed for consideration. Fuel costs, we can't really control that, we know that's gonna come our way. Bus drivers with increased routes and a growing district, we, we estimate it'll cost us about one point six more positions, should we be able to find them. Okay? So this, these are the tough conversations now of how do we responsibly grow while at the same time we have to responsibly adjust to losing an override election? So I want you to have some tabletop conversations now. And if you, board members, if you haven't shifted, now's a good time, you can double up or you can just stay with your home group here. Decreased instructional minutes, there's a lot of green up here, I'm getting closer, that's a two. Increased class size maximums, there's other dots besides red, but quite a few there. More preponderance of red there. Full day kindergarten, just added a new number four, some threes here, threes and fours. Pay-to-play or empty. Forty school week has kind of a nice mix of heavier on the ones and a two, a three, and a four, or four threes. IB cut, a couple of there, a couple there and athletics options too. And you also see it with some of the pay-to-play participation fees, so maybe some ideas that could generate from that that could be combined. Extracurricular activities, lots of threes, couple of fours. DLI class size reduction, a few, and then a couple of fours here at, in the central office administration cuts. So if you'll find your way back to your table, we're gonna talk now, move to the second part of the agenda. And board members, if you wanna make a shift to a different group, make a shift. And then we'll, we'll summarize the tallies for these, for each of the meetings. We'll take a picture of these and summarize it in an Excel doc and send it out to everybody. All right, we've been now talking about budget override and the conversation and the interest that were generated are mostly in the, I call it the budget category of instruction. Right, so that is where we have maybe more dollars than our peers go towards instruction. It does not mean that that's the only place that we can take, get cuts from, right? So just need, know that the whole MNO budget has to be thought of as a whole, but to get us thinking about if we were rare, the instructor money's come from, is that the same place that we take them back from? But we do have the entire budget to consider. So if the override passed or didn't pass, the district is also faced with growth. This school year, we experienced twelve percent growth. We opened a new school K-5, next year it will go to K-8. The following year, we're expecting somewhere between five and six percent growth, which is really what we budgeted for this past year, but we really kind of super elevated our, our growth even higher than expected, higher than our demographers anticipated. So that's what we start to look at is how do we grow? When we look at what the demographer showed us over time, over the next ten years, we're going to see more and more growth. All the developments that are coming, we're expecting that. So we also have to think about as a district, how do we grow? We targeted, remember I said we were targeting about trying to hit that seventy percent mark to instruction, thirty percent to operations. So as we grow, the categories of the budget, we have a certain percentage we've been doing with each one. Let's see if I've got, see where I'm aiming now. Okay. So on your, on your worksheets, let's see, on the, on your tables, you will see almost like mini budgets for the growth that we expect for next year. That means above and beyond what we already have, we will be getting additional revenue for growth for, for the students that we have. So for that five to six percent, with that comes additional revenue. And so we have to think about how will we grow as a district? So if, an easy analogy is if the classroom, we had thirty children in the classroom and now all of a sudden we have forty kids at that school in that grade level, well now we needed to move from one teacher to two teachers. Everybody kind of gets that. You have to add more teaching staff as you go. So in the same way, if we have more students to serve with special education, then we also have, will need special education teachers. We will also at some point hit, hit a limit where our psychologists, we have to add more psychologists. We add on a school, we have to add school administration. We add on transportation, we add on drivers. We add on, to the district, we've added, the past year, we added or combined into some reorganization and partially added almost a whole position to human resources. For every one hundred staff members, we have a person in human resources. When we hit like about another five hundred kids, we'll be adding, we'll be recommending to add another technology support person to support with the, the technology. So for however, you know, a certain number of square feet of facilities we have, then at that point of that growth, then we add on additional groundskeeping. So we try to, you know, maintain some ratios, but we try to do that so it doesn't ever exceed our overall percentages of, by each of those budget categories because we've been successful as a district of maintaining a high percentage to instruction and overall classroom and a low percentage, or very low percentage to the operation side of things. So that's why you're now seeing the budget increase that we're expected to get for new, new students generates, then how, we should need to think about how will we grow? So the obvious question that comes to mind is, well, what if you don't add these positions? Then that would take care of the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we don't add the positions, then we start to shift and we, we would have to adjust how we are growing as a district. So our instruction could be maintained at a higher level, it could be higher than what it is currently today. It could also be our administrative costs while low, could they be even lower? And what are the intended benefits and consequences of that? Right, so of just how you would responsibly grow a district? So these are, what you're seeing on the page are what have suggested, you know, for what potential budget interest would be to deal with the growth and responsibly maintain that. And so I'm going to give you a little bit of time at your tables to talk about those. Kelly, if you'll just put them, the next, just click on the slide, I must've set it down. Here is, yeah, that's what's the one I want. Go back one. Go back one. Okay. This is an overview and how it's divided is these are the things that you see over and over in multiple budget categories. That means we have to either cut something else that's on this list, or cut even more on that list, or some other idea for a cut to be able to increase that. But it's absolutely a viable consideration. Are you assigning attention over here? Are you assigning attention over here? Okay, I'm just going to summarize again what the ask is here. After you've had a chance to discuss the things that are on this list, you're asking yourself, these are ads, is it more important to balance it out with less cuts to instruction? Or keep these as is, or adjust these somehow? Another table said, "I'd like to see a higher percentage of dollars going to compensation." That means we have to find even more money. That means we have to either cut something else that's on this list, or cut even more on that list, or some other idea for a cut to be able to increase that. All right, show me how much more time so we can hear out from the groups and have some final comments for the governing board. One minute from this group. If nobody else answers, we're going to go with one minute. One minute, set the timer. Okay, if you can wrap up your final thoughts, I'm just going to go table to table and ask you if there's anything that you would now offer differently to either take off of this list, to not be an ad, or to increase it in some way, or to have some connection to something that's over there on the wall. So really, this is really now saying, put it all together in your brains of how would we respond to growth and how do we respond to a cut at the same time in the same year? So I'll start with the table that's quiet. You guys can wrap up there back at Mr. Todd's group. And who wants to speak for this group? Yeah, go ahead.
We kind of talked about in order to preserve the compensation increases, that perhaps this is not the time to increase headcount until the current staff members are really reaching out for additional resources. Maybe stretch it as far as we possibly can before increasing headcount so that we can rely on compensation increases and things like maybe director of maintenance and transportation is a little bit more of a luxury during a time where we're cutting funding for kids programs.
All right, so the idea of adding additional teachers for that pupil teacher ratio, that is offset by, some of that money is offset over here on this side, which did get prioritized more highly than other things. So I think that idea is balanced out there for that part. And then I heard the additional information about maybe this isn't the year, like we need to add a direct transportation maintenance, but maybe this isn't the year, maybe it's next year, maybe it's the following year. So we'll take that. The only thing I didn't say was there are additional responsibilities that have added with construction new buildings, so now we enter the warranty two years period of time for two different new facilities. And we are also entering into construction phases with an addition and a transportation facility, and probably a new school on the heels of that. So I did forget to mention that. But your point is well taken, you know, maybe we don't add this next year. Okay, how about this table? Mr. Guire, your table. Somebody, one of the community members want to say an idea, anything different that you would add here or here now that you've put it all together in your head? They don't want to touch it. Good. Minnie, how about your table? Okay, I'm bringing the microphone over and...
I, what are we going to say? IB, getting rid of the enrichment fee, or the signature programs?
Or bolster them.
Or bolster them. And marketing the override now instead of at the last minute. Okay? That's it? Okay.
Okay, so marketing, I can't do anything with a budget, a budget piece with, but the first one was the IB, I'm sorry, the signature programs. So does that already show up over here? Or would this table now be prioritizing more highly than what they did when they did the dots with the signature programs? So is it already reflected? Or now are you thinking? So perhaps an even bigger investment, which would take more dollars and more investment there. Okay. And the marketing one, if we were increasing, you know, over what we have, that could be a maintain cost, or it could be an increase cost, is what I'm hearing potentially. Okay. All right. Hard conversations. Board members, do you have any group, any questions or comments for the group at this time? Do you want to each kind of take a turn, or do you feel like your questions or comments have been adjusted? Mr. Park says no.
Knowing that we do have growth, my question is, at what point does our student population growth offset the loss of $850,000? Can we do that? Is it, now we're seeing 12% now, would we need like a 30% growth to offset it? Do we know?
So with the growth we have right now, if we didn't add any positions, no teaching positions, no administration, we have more than enough. So that's, we have to put all that together. So you're having to say philosophically, our public voted against, and we had a list of things against. We can stick with that list, which is where we started some of these conversations today, or we can go into other areas inclusive of the operations side and/or the overall growth that's needed. We have both of those. So it's not going to take 30%. It's, there are dollars that if we were to cut $850,000, we have the ability to do that with growth. But it comes with consequences of it won't be schools and districts as you see today. It still, it still comes with, you know, a negative consequence there. Mr. Guire? He said no. He says, do you want to change your mind? You want to make a comment? Okay, would you like to make a comment?
Well, there's a question I had. The question I had is actually for Kelly, if maybe you can jot this down, of that with the kindergarten, that rather than it be .5 or half a day at kindergarten, that what was raised here, and it's not on those boards, so we're kind of skipping here, but of if Astrea, they grew at, say, point, whatever their growth was, of that can that kindergarten day coincide with that growth percentage? 6%, say .6, whatever, whatever that works out to be, right? That was one of the questions, of what would that look like? Or also with that, of what does the cut specifically to kindergarten need to look like to match what the cuts need to be? So as an example of, where are we at, 810,000 that we need to cut? Of specifically to kindergarten, what would we have to do to kindergarten to meet that all in one fell swoop? These are all just things that if, that a question came up, that if, because you're probably going to see it in an email, so just so you know what the context is.
It is working? So anyway, I was just thinking in terms of your half day, so when I, I think I'll certainly pop that out and see what that would be like. So one thing that we would need to consider along with that is if we're going to go definitely to half day for all, no, that sounds better. If we're going to go to all, you know, half day kindergarten, then we add transportation costs. So whereas if we're looking at, maybe we have 1.6 in kindergarten teachers that we could come in and reduce that by half, coming up with the 800,000, there may be an unintended consequence that we might need to provide transportation in the middle of the day. So then you're going to negate some of that cost. So you may need, you may actually need to go more than a half day to be able to accomplish that $850,000.
And I think that's what was brought up, of not necessarily concrete half day, but if it was a .6 or .7. Wherever that puts you, I think the thought was you're still not eliminating the miles and getting the kids home, that we still keep those miles, so we're not losing that funding, but we're saving money there. So just something, maybe if you could work that out also.
I can do that most certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did.
It impacts families. Okay, you can't do two separate times because nobody works that time schedule. So we operate around a work schedule for families. You can't, you can't make that happen. There's no second graders going home to nobody.
I feel like we kind of need it to impact families just a little bit, enough to make it uncomfortable enough that there'll be some impact on the vote, and that is less of an impact to instruction in the kids. And maybe it comes down to a family like us, maybe we only need drop off and not pickup. We have to make those hard choices, and then maybe I'll think twice about not voting this next go around. So...
But one thing I would add is that we have, if we're estimating 414 kiddos, and you multiply that times the parents, is that going to actually equal the number of votes that need to push us over to a yes? Just all these different things to think about.
So while we're discussing the idea of impacting all of the students to reduce the number of days they're attending in the week, maybe you just impact the number of days that the kindergartners are attending. And whether it's three days, or four days, or whatever, it's going to work out correctly with the staff and the individual school budgets and their enrollment, then that's where you settle.
And so one more thing to make it really challenging around kindergarten is, we can do that, and we keep our kindergarten teachers whole, the ones that would stay with us with that reduced schedule. We potentially could then lose families that go someplace else for full daycare, and then they stay with them for the next eight years. So we lost nine years of students going. So hard, hard decisions and lots of pros and cons, and you guys are doing a good job of surfacing them. Mr. Todd, some closing questions or comments? He has none. All right. If you had so much fun tonight, we're doing this again on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at three other school sites. We hope you tell your friends and family to join at any school. These are really just open to the community. So with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Guire. Off the top of my head, I would say Cave Creek has over a long period of time. I'm not, I know there are more than that, I don't know. Cave Creek Unified School District.
The agenda was pretty wide open. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion? And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Paul? Brian? Michael? I am also an aye, sure that we adjourned at, was it 7:51? Thank you.
Thank you.